Nineteen oh six.
Um, yep.
Okay.
Section. Well, this, yep nineteen oh six, yep. I'll make you a copy of it before.
Okay.
And then you can. Anything else we need to add to LR? Like residential district?
Uh, one part you might wanna rezone a lake. It's zoned agricultural. Somebody wants to develop the lot there right off of uh Lake Road, I forgot the.
Lake Forest.
Lake Forest.
That's agricultural. They have to have a hundred foot sidewalk lots up that that makes it impossible to build on any empty lots there. But it's up to you guys, we just tell them they have to apply for variance because it's impossible to, some of the lots aren't even a hundred foot, you know? And then the depth wise, it's uh a hundred, rear yard is a hundred feet. Some of them lots may, it might be a hundred and twenty feet deep if that, I don't, I didn't look it up, but. That should've been zoned suburban residential, is my opinion. Cause it is around the Lake Lake and.
Off to go.
There's an idea.
What's that?
There's a decent idea, I said Quanum want to. He lives there, he got it.
He lives there.
So make that note on on the ordinance, just put milk towards the bottom. And then next meeting we'll.
Talk to Quanum.
We'll just kinda get some more input. And then I think we can kinda finalize everything after that. Fair, fair to say or no? Yeah? Jenny, I'll give you that grid so you can.
Okay, so I have nineteen oh six, we're gonna get a grid from Phil.
Yep.
And then we're gonna talk to Quanum on rezoning the lake, Lake Forest. Right?
Yeah, just put um, yeah, just talk to him, just put it as a bullet point, um. Lake Forest.
It's not gonna be like permanent.
Yeah, go, yep.
I'll put it in red or something.
Any else for LR? Okay. Good job.
Geez Louise. All this paperwork gonna end, so we end up with two's in the paper. And then what do we do, send it to the attorney just to have the board make sure we got everything?
Yeah.
Got our Ts crossed and our Is dotted?
Yep, but um, we wanna try to get a couple other things in there too.
The T's done before.
Yep, so we invest. Our investments worth the time. Um, that concludes old business, um. New business. Um, Dave, I guess I'll kinda go back to you.
Yeah, yeah, and Dave, the Lake Forest, like you said, it's ag residential and. They won't, the complaint with the camper was on there and you said it can only be there for like fourteen days, right? Is that what you said?
Uh, there's no uh, we have a complaint, and I ran into a promise a couple years ago. Where it was a verbal complaint and then came down to it and, you know, it was like. He said, she said type thing, I guess you could say, and I don't want that to run into, I don't wanna run into that again, so I'm telling them they need a written complaint. I drove out there a couple times, but.
Were you, were you thinking if somebody came to you with a complaint on that lake, that the camper been there how long?
Yeah, I need, oh, how long can it be there?
Yeah. That's what.
Uh, it's in the zoning book, I think it was.
I went page thirty, page thirty-two is what I found.
Seven days or fourteen days, uh.
That's what you said at the meeting, fourteen.
Yeah, mine been.
What question?
Yeah, I'm on page thirty-two, uh.
I looked up. Uh, mine is page thirty-two, seven forty-five.
Uh, mobile homes or temporary residences, like. I don't know what else you would put.
Yeah, temporary, mine's way off on some other pages, we have.
I saw on three point, three oh nine, and then B. Later pictures.
Yep, yeah, I got it.
That's what I found.
Yep. And what's it say on there for so many days per?
It says as long as, uh.
Per month?
As far as I read is, if they applied for the brands, they had twelve months and then if they didn't. Uh, six months extension unless. And then they had, well, another one I read that they paid five hundred dollars.
Eleven number four?
Yes, and then if they don't do it in thirty days, then the township board can use that money to remove the trailer, is kinda how I remember it in my agreement.
And you're talking about, is that, that's not temporary office, that's not a mobile home, that's a temporary residence.
This is a camper.
Uh, temporary use, is that where you're looking at?
That's what I didn't know what you were, you would look at, that is true. For like that camper in the example. Well, that's what I wanted to know, if town line had their own, but Marcy wanna know if it was over, you know, county wire, township wide ordinance or?
And specifically camping.
Yeah.
It's like it might've been under storage, but then it had a use under there too, cause that there doesn't show that hour, uh. That section doesn't say you can't be in it over so many days or somewhere, I'm looking.
I don't believe it's anything.
Temporary use of structure, page thirty-three, that's what you were talking about. Right?
Yeah, such a.
Yeah, okay, um. Or does it have temporary use, okay, it says office, it's not an office, mobile home, it's not a mobile.
On a home.
Huh?
On a mobile home, it's an RV, yeah.
No, it's a camper, it's an RV, or.
You can pick it up and hook it up all the way.
Yep, so upon finding temporary owner, it shall be pay a fee of township, or you know, temporary mobile home, it shall be limited period of twelve months. The permanent residence, not a part of the fifty percent. Uh, see, that's just if you're uh, building a new home.
That's why I heard that.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we have anything for.
No, we don't.
For like camping, cause that's one of the things that Brandy um, challenged us with, was coming up with something when it comes to a.
Now, Winfield.
RV camper.
Doesn't Douglas have a?
Has uh, Winfield's the best when it comes, in my opinion, it's the best when it comes to temporary, there's like four or five different types of temporary structures.
Doesn't Douglas say you can't put an RV unit on a lot unless you could, unless you have a home there?
It's uh, not in ag, I believe.
On Indian Lakes.
On Indian Lakes, yeah.
Like you can't have an RV unit sitting there, somebody living in it, coming up on weekends in a RV unit unless they have a house sitting there.
It's an association.
Doug, yeah, Douglas has.
Douglas has.
That's just the association rule. Right?
So your question to us?
Do you wanna add a temporary?
Just wondering what, what our book said and, so if somebody does turn a complaint in, we got an idea. And obviously wanna know if it was different for ag residential versus residential. How I.
Four, just wondering.
Cause I don't see if they're there for, they're all till it comes up for a month, there's cheaper staying on that, but as long as it doesn't block somebody view on the lake.
Except there's no sewer there.
Yeah.
What they do with sewage, if they don't pull it off.
Well, they got a tank on it, but I mean that.
But that only goes for so long and then you gotta pull it off and dump that tank somewhere, other than the back field behind it.
Also called Richard or somewhere.
Yeah, well, they don't.
Yeah, or something. Drive down the road and go.
There's a guy sitting right on cover. That does, that lives in an RV and has for years and I swear to God, he was dumping it in the back field behind me.
Okay, here we go. On a storage of recreational equipment, three point two eight. Says uh, this and that, then it has a number two. Uh, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, recreational equipment may be temporarily parked within any yard for cleaning, loading, or unloading. Oh, for not more than forty-eight hours within a seven day period, then recreational may be used for living or housekeeping, this is number three. Uh, purposes for a period not to exceed fourteen days, yeah, per year. And it doesn't say if it's a lake residential or ag or suburban or rural residential. Um, you can do that anywhere, but I believe above that, you can't have it in the front yard. Let me see where I'm going with the residential, okay, on a lot within a residential, I follow him now, okay. Corner interior recreation, shall not be okay within a required front yard, yeah. So. They can do that for seven days out of the year, or fourteen days out of the year, I'm sorry.
You'd think Brandy was going after, what do you think she was looking?
Just wondering, now's the question, I mean, she had it, Marcy had it, we all, just trying to figure, cause Dave had that complaint. I mean, he's waiting for a complaint, we couldn't act on it, but just about the camper, not till we're wondering is.
And what it is, to my understanding, I talked to the neighbors there too a little bit, I drove down there, people stopped me, I talked to whoever wanted to talk to me. And it wasn't the people putting the camper in there, but there was a neighbor and they said they rented, the owners of that lot rented it out for a year. To these people, so they can camp there anytime they want to. Which by our zoning book, they can't do that. But.
I can see that's definitely.
I'm waiting for a written complaint, cause I don't wanna get caught up in a, uh, big mess.
There need to be something, and I mean, Marcy was right, what? I don't see a problem with somebody being there, if they're gonna. If it's not more than a month, I would say as long as it's not blocking a view with them.
So you'd have to take that out of the fourteen eight and then put down thirteen.
Could it become commercial property then, if you bought the place to rent it back out again? I mean, he's running a business off of it.
No, it's kinda like Airbnb.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like Airbnb, so you don't have to change that to commercial, you've got a lot of Airbnb's around that are residential.
Well, you have, they got the whole septic same, and sewer system, this guy doesn't have that, right?
No, now there's one in uh, Winfield, it was going on, they got that straightened out, but that guy, uh. He's got portable water, he can dump water in his uh, camper and have water, then he's got a, you know, just like a regular camper's got a sewer tank. Then he's got one of these things on wheels, where you fill it up and you transfer it out, or it out of there. When it's full, then you bring it back, and that's what you do with your sewer, and supposedly he's, that's what he's doing. There's a lot of property there, woods, I don't. I can't go across through his woods looking for where he's dumping it, but.
So it's called a honey pot, so they will clean the sewer, and then they will haul that container that has all the sewer to a. You can open a septic lid and dump it or whatever, not saying what they're doing over there with the, what the people are complaining about, but.
Dump station, yeah. Well, as far as I know, they are doing it, but somebody didn't think.
You own a private piece of property, what you're saying is you're gonna tell them that they can't camp there, uh, for only fourteen days. It's kinda like what goes around, around town and lake.
Out of the year, yeah.
So with that being said, if I bought a piece of property, you know, five acres, and I wanna go camp all summer there, you're telling me I can't, fourteen days I can, but that's it.
Correct.
Move it for one day, it's never fourteen days.
And I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't agree with that.
You wanna get technical, you have a hunting cabin out there. I have to go back out, out in the middle of the woods, chase them out, tell them they can't hunt on their own property?
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I think I saw the day about there on that one.
I can understand associations around lakes, definitely, town line, lake, fourteen, I get stuff like that, but if there isn't an association or there isn't anything that. You know, around there that says otherwise, it's a private piece of property.
Then you gotta have a limit on it, otherwise. You're gonna have people that don't have a house, and they're just squatters, uh, living there, now in Reynolds Township, there's stuff going on. I'm glad I'm not the enforcement officer there, I'm just the zoning guy, but um. There's a lot, a fair amount of guys living out in the woods, and they have what do you call them, ankle necklaces when they're released from jail.
Yes.
Them people are camping in the woods and uh, known drug addicts and uh, felons and everything out there.
There's a permitting process.
So you gotta put a limit on it somehow, you're gonna get that kinda stuff.
Yeah, that I agree, th- there should be something, I don't know exactly what, that's up to the board, but I can tell you right now, there is a lady living in a camper on Schmid Road. On three acres in the woods, she even gets mail there, just FYI, I'm not gonna, I'm not putting my name on a complaint, but I did find that out recently. So, but yes.
Well, there's a single bike mobile on Schmid though, that I'm sure is illegal, because our ordinance says you can't have a single bike in here and it's been there with it. But then it's been put in there within the last four years, between binding and back us on Schmid.
So we answered your question then?
Like on, on the arsenal right there.
It's in the report.
Fourteen days.
Shooting off guns and.
Unless they're building, and they wanna use it as, you know, um, it as a temporary residence, then they have to apply, they have twelve months, they can redo that for another six months.
Does our book have a where if it's over that fourteen days, it's considered a temporary residence?
It says recreational equipment be used in for living or housekeeping purposes for a period exceeding fourteen days in a calendar year.
Okay.
So they can't take it off one day and go back, it's a calendar year, fourteen days.
Yeah, whole year, yeah.
So, fourteen days. Second thing, Dave?
All right, uh, white for the vehicles. Yeah, they, I got it, David, I think it's at page forty-seven, they, well, same one we're on, storage and repair vehicle.
Yeah, two, three point two nine.
Yeah, storage and repair, yeah.
And I always thought as long as they had the vehicle with a current plate on the vehicle, that they're okay, Dave was saying they need to have headlights, so I didn't.
Well, okay, I'm gonna, yeah, I might tell them on the next.
I always thought as long as they had a current plate on it, and Dave said it had to be operational, so I didn't, that's all Brandy wanted to check was what we actually had in there.
So, sure, the repair, restoration, maintenance procedures of any vehicles in RD. When such work is not conducted entirely within the interior of a building, shall be subject to the following. Procedures or projects exceeding forty hours in a duration, or which require the vehicle to be immobile or inoperable for forty hours, shall be carried out. Within a garage. Only one such period shall be permitted in a single thirty day period.
So if you have headlights busted out on your car, you can drive on the road legally, that's what I'm saying, you can't, or busted out windshield. You know, so they can, they have junk vehicles, I, I read this as you can't have that kinda stuff in here, uh, because it's uh, it's immobile. Or it may not mo- motor wise, it's not, it's maybe operable, but.
If it's an operative, road, road wise, it's not.
But street wise, you can't drive it, so it's, that makes it in, immobile.
So that's about the number two then, is a mag residential, two vehicles may be stored in the rear yard with no time limitation for said storage.
Yep, now, one on Elm, then went to court, one side, two dead, to the backyard. Uh, way in the back, but, you know, that was okay, so.
So they moved to the backyard.
No time line. Ask your question or?
Yep, so.
If they have to answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, forty-eight hours. To fix. And make operable. Or put in the backyard, but no more than two.
All right, are you gonna leave that in the book, or you guys are talking about?
I mean.
Taking it out or, it's up to you, you know, I'm just asking.
So who says in the book?
What's the board feel on that for? I don't. I mean, if I'm an example, I'm just saying for any thing else. Forty-eight hours seems like a very short time, if you have a broken headlight, you can't.
Are we really having people complaining because their headlight's broken and it's inoperable?
There's one on uh, Elm, I believe it is.
Must be more to the story.
And uh, they had two of them, one plated, they moved one, and I went, took them back to court, I don't know, a few weeks ago or so. Because he still had one there, we went to court for it, and the magistrate said he had uh, so many days, and I think he got fines. I don't have it on here, I forgot, it's like four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for not getting both of them off the property. Um, so there, that was uh. The Lake Honey Moon Heights Association's the ones that were complaining about that one. But their complaint's just the same as anybody else.
They may have a special thing in their ordinance that says that, something about that too, cause they have a special zoning.
Yeah, they don't, they can't enforce it, they don't.
Can I ask you a question or?
It does, but I mean.
Still have the zoning there.
Yeah, but I can't enforce their book.
Oh, you can't, well, there's, like, why don't they?
I know, I first got in the board, the first complaint, and then was going out of town by the airport, the repair facility right there, there was a lot of vehicles there, but he got a variance. As a repair facility, I do remember that one, I first got on, but that's just one of them.
It's a business?
It is, but I mean.
Yeah, we got twenty-five cars in here.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot there, but he does fix them, but it seemed like they, they moved a long time.
I mean, they did for. Yes.
I was, I, I knew being on here, that was one, yes, no, I'll take that back.
All right. I mean, do you, do you all think that we should look at that? I mean, we can. I guess think about that, and then we can talk about it in our next meeting, because we could. We could make it part of our, you know, yeah, I mean, it's a perfect opportunity to.
Look at that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put that back on old business and. Discuss that further, a fair thing, you know?
Yep. We thinking of camper too, or just the?
Um, I, I, as far as being fourteen days?
No, but I'm saying I would refer to changing to that or. Just like report back, I don't.
What's you guys' thoughts?
I mean, if somebody purchases property and they don't have the money to build, but say that in five years, their plan is to build or something, but they still wanna u- utilize that property, I mean, is that something they could? Get like a permit for, so that we know like, hey, this one's.
Yeah, cause that, they did that on Elm, right, they had to use that twelve month, they're gonna build their house, and then they didn't get it done, so they got an extension for another twelve months.
Yeah, I don't remember right.
I remember right.
I've got.
That's what I remember, they finally got a basement built, so they're living in the basement, or they don't have the upper structure on yet, but I do remember that coming, you know, it's. I think that's what, maybe we should.
When I add that to the agenda.
Make that too, and then we can do like, Marcy said, do something, you wanna stay there camper in the summertime and then. Or if you got, like Jake's saying, his example, make that just every twelve months check back in, cause otherwise you're just gonna save five years and. Five years that, well, I maybe need another five years.
It's just like, five years is excessive, I think.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying like, you know, five year permit plus.
Yeah, no, yes, no, but, I mean.
Okay.
So isn't there such a thing as they could have to get a special land, land use every year to do something like that?
Yeah, that's what that twelve months is.
Yeah.
Twelve months are they gonna ask for, I, I think they'd have to ask, you know what, what's it say, they can get it for twelve months and one renewal?
Right.
And then after that, they'd have to replace, or start over again.
So I guess to answer their question, the board's question, I guess we, we, we do have some things there in the books when it comes to that, and I guess let them know that. We'll, we'll think about it for our next meeting and have it on the agenda to bring it up one more time. In the meantime, I guess we'll need to go out to look and just research to see if there's.
What other ones?
Yeah, and, and see what the other. Um, surrounding townships are doing.
Good with that one, okay, last one is Brandy called Bull Phil line. The new law is supposed to take effect in November, because of like the wind and the solar and even battery plants. Um, basically the state's gonna take over. What we're having our zoning book and basically do whatever they're feeling like. Brandy's saying, the attorney's saying we should. Go back or should add into our book some type of decommissioning for any type of energy, that's why you can't just say solar or wind, there could be battery plant. We need to put something in our book to cover these, to at least try to cover the township, so we're not liable if they abandon that. I mean, there's more, now, she wants to have a joint meeting with the township board and the planning commission. So the attorneys are at once, what she'd like to do. Now, she's still trying to figure, she'd like to do it on a normal township board meeting and just, but the township board has to approve the meeting before. We can come, so she may have a special meeting before, between now and our next township board meeting, so that we can have it on the township board meeting.
When, when is the law?
About November, what Brandy said today.
So more information to come on that, but just understand that you may get a, a notification saying, hey, the attorney's coming to the board meeting on this day. For some further discussion when it comes to the, the new.
It would be like August twelfth, if, I mean, that's our next normal one.
Okay.
Just so you guys know, an idea of.
So it'd be after August twelfth?
No, it shouldn't be, if she can do it, which you, if the attorney can come out to August twelfth, she'd have a special board meeting just for us to approve it. Before that, and then we could come August twelfth, that's what she has to.
Just get board approval first, but obviously.
That makes sense.
Right, yes, yes, yeah, special meeting to approve, and then it'd be on the twelfth.
Yeah, that's what.
So that's the, tentatively, that's what she'd like to do.
Yes, so, but she's gotta find out for the.
Attorney.
Yes, first.
And we just want you all to know that, to, to, to be able to comment, because it's gonna, it could affect us. Terminally. They tried to get it, I think, on a, on a ballot, but there were signatures, there wasn't much signatures to add.
They're still trying.
Yeah, it may go to midterm.
Right, hundred seventy.
Where to be on the.
In the meantime.
Twenty-six. Ballot, but it's not looking great.
In the meantime, I think the, the township, the board is trying to protect this, yes. Said it, Dave?
Yep.
Uh, hold a comments? Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, Marce.
No, you go ahead.
Um, thank you guys for all your work, um, I wanna make a comment about the accessory building on the front lot for the lake. I agree with you, Phil, I think that it would be beneficial, maybe just downsize it a little, make it smaller. Um, I do know that a lot of lakes have longer lots, so having to carry big tubes and stuff like that down, it would just, I think it would be beneficial to. Have a small building down there. Um, so that's just my two cents on that. Um, and as for the camper, I think it would be a benefit to our community if we have people that are buying property. It will bring people to this area, um, whether commercially, um, but I, I think that that's a great idea to do a permit, like a six month permit for the summer. To allow them to do so, or while they're building a house or whatever, so I think that, that would be very beneficial to our community.
Wait, did you, caution to get some money there too, as far as a permit, and maybe there's a goal there as far as to.
Yeah, when it comes to the uh, temporary permits, I, I would uh, read up on Winfield's, um. Cause it does have permit for seasonal permit, has so many months and whatever, quite a bit, so you can do it all summer, then they have uh. I don't know, three other ones, I can't think of the names of them, one's if you're building a new home and uh. Um, one is like an office for uh, construction, office, you can have one there for that. And uh, there's another one too, I can't remember, but if you look into their uh, temporary dwelling, there's three are poured in there, and it's, it's pretty explicit. It covers everything I think that, that people would want, you know, what they'd utilize there.
No, that was it. Um, as far as uh, the definitions of the, the front yard is the lakeside. My suggestion, put that in big, bold, black letters for the public, because the public does not understand that at all.
Those that live on a lake understand that.
Uh, correct, but they don't. And then second, of course, I agree also, I sell tracts of land, and that is something that a- actually, I guess I should be stating and, and know this, because. A lot of people that are buying tracts of land in this county, they do wanna recreational, they wanna go camp on it, you know, that's the big thing, five, ten acres or whatever. Um, so I agree on the permits, that would actually create some revenue, and that's a great idea, so maybe think about.
We don't need a house or barn or whatever.
Yeah, and put something like that together would be great. Yeah.
Any other, just question, any, any other feedback from the tiny homes, did, did?
He's.
I called up the messages like probably three times, and is there a place in Mount Pleasant area that he, he talked about, but do you know where it's located at?
That I'm not sure, but I can tell you the process where he is, cause he calls me quite a bit too, and the last conversation I had with him is, um. That I'm not sure, but I can tell you the process where he is, cause he calls me quite a bit too, and the last conversation I had with him is, um. He's going to have to go through a variance process, because one, the lots he wants to create are, are nonconforming. So that's where we left it, so whether he has, has put that in or not, the apply for variance, I don't know, but um, he's still on that tiny home community. Um, just east of the intersection there by Fitzner Road, so we'll see what, what he does actually.
Um, I'll close poll the comments, next meeting is uh September.
I'll probably write. Okay, so with regards to the tiny homes, I've been kinda paying attention, what's going on at Double Six, you guys know where the bowling alley was, that was a big area, it's supposedly getting cleared off. And per Adam Peterson, who is on the.
Commissioner's.
Moncom Economic whatever, and the commissioner, he's saying that the place that's going in there is gonna be building tiny homes. So this may be something that. That it's gonna be a thing, cause there's obviously, somebody thinks it's a thing, or they wouldn't be like destroying this piece of property, so it may be something.
It's up there a lot.
It's out there.
It is, so.
It's just, yeah, tiny homes, though, I don't know the definition, if that's where it's on wheels and you take it out.
No, they don't take them on wheels.
There are some.
There's some that way.
There are some that way.
Yeah, but.
Like the thought process was that he wanted to do it there, or was to actually?
Build them, correct, yes, so they be permanent structures.
Just the sizes are nonconform to what we have now on the homes.
Okay, so I'll close a couple of comments, next meeting is September eleventh at six o'clock, I know probably last year, I think the board had a meeting on September eleventh, I'm sure the town was gonna have something happen that day. Um, usually that happens about seven o'clock, I think, so hopefully it'll be done before that. Um, it's, it's kinda goal, so. If I get a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Any questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries, thank you.